I'd like to call the January 23rd Town Council meeting to order. We stand for the National Anthem. I'm sorry for pledging allegiance. Maureen, would you lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, next part, public comment. Anybody inside here who would like to make comment, please, you can come up to the podium, state your name, address, and you have five minutes to address the council. Nobody? Anybody online? Cap?
I do not see any hands raised.
We'll give them a couple of seconds to catch up in case we're on a 10-second delay. All right, we're still good?
All good.
All right, we'll close public comment. We'll go on to D, consideration of special topics. Kathy?
So, Joe Swetki is here, our Director of Finance and Administration, and I think he's going to give us a PowerPoint, the numbers, because they're small on the board, or in front of you to follow through. So, thank you, Joe.
Cue the music.
Do you want the...
What?
There's the music.
Oh. Would you like the keyboard to advance the slides? Or you want me to do it? I can do it.
Yeah, why don't you... Yeah. It's... See, we don't really have a crowd. It's more for the public as opposed to the council for the PowerPoint. But my name's Joe Swetki, and Director of Finance, and I'm supposed to give you a financial for... Presentation on the financial forecast. So, I'm going to start by a couple of things. Explaining the forecast, some of you are new, so you probably don't know, and some of you probably heard this before. I apologize if you have. I do this forecast twice a year. I do it right after you guys, or after the voters approve the budget, and I do it in October, November timeframe. And the reason why I do it in the October-November timeframe is to get an idea of where we're heading for the next fiscal year primarily, and what I can do to mitigate or improve the budget process as we go along. If I know where we're going, what it looks like we're going, I could come up with ideas or strategies for how we could approach the budget. I do it in the spring after the budget to see what's going to happen for the next year, because every time you do something to the budget, it impacts the financial forecast. If you can go to the next slide. I don't really think of it as a financial forecast. It's more of a road trip. And the reason why I say that is most... Some of you know, I go to Maine quite a bit during the summertime. And when I go to Maine, I've been going there for 40 years. I go to the same spot for 40 years. I probably go five or six times a year. Every time I get in the car at my house, my wife gets to MapQuest, and she puts in the address, and it comes up, here's the route, it's going to be five and a half hours, and it's going to be 300 miles. So, if I follow that route, it's five and a half hours, it's 300 miles. Sometimes I make it in five hours, sometimes I make it in five and a half hours, sometimes it's 300 miles, sometimes it's 600 miles. Because how many times do you actually follow the route? How many times do you... There's a lot of variables involved when MapQuest comes up with those numbers. How fast you're going to drive, what the traffic is like, where you're going, how many stops you're going to take. So, there are variables. And the financial forecast is also based on a lot of variables, okay? It's not a straight line. There are things that change it all the time. Some years, things may happen. Last year, the council decided not to increase the overall budget, so that impacts part of how the forecast works going forward. So, the different things that are done, you follow the forecast exactly. This should happen. 99% of the times, you don't follow the forecast exactly, so it doesn't always exactly work out that way. Saying that, I will say that last February, when I did the forecast, I came up, just remember the number, 5.91%, okay? So, if you can go to the next slide, and the forecast is actually modeled off of a document you're going to see quite a bit over the next couple of months. It's this tax and budget worksheet page that shows up in your budget document. This only shows two years. It shows the year that we're living in, the adopted budget year, and it shows the year that we're going to be going in. And you'll see that various stages, that when Kathy gives you her budget, it's going to say town... It's going to say the adopted budget in one column, and town manager recommended in another column. Then you're going to see it saying town council recommended budget, town council proposed budget, and eventually town adopted budget. So, you only see two years. What I do with this forecast is I use it and I go out 10 years. So, the forecast you have in front of you is actually 10 years' worth of projections based on the categories as displayed on this format. On the first page, on the handout that you have, it's basically the top... Right now, just looking at this section here, it says expenditures, so it's the top part. What you have on the screen and what you have on the first page are the first three years. So, the 23-24 adopted budget, that's the year we're living in. That's what the council did for this year. So, this is what they adopted, a budget of $121.2 million, and those are the various categories of expenditures. And the 24-25 projected budget, that's what the projection is, what the expenditures should be next year if certain variables are met. And I'm going to go quickly just through some of these lines. Education in town, those numbers are based on history, okay? Those numbers are actually based on what happens in the past. I have... We have that, and you have a lot of this data in front of you. I guess Kathy gave it all to you. But what we look at is, we look at averages, average increases over time periods. To give you an example, the Board of Ed budget, and this projection, is projected to increase 3% a year. Now, some years, it's higher than 3%, some years, it's less than 3%. But I can tell you that over the last 20 years, the Board of Ed budget has increased on average 3.3%. Over the last 15 years, it's increased an average of 3%. Over the last 10 years, it's increased an average of 2.96%. Over the last five years, it's increased an average of 2.9%. So, 3% seems to be around the number, the bogey, that the Board of Ed budget on average increases each year. So, we carried that forward for 10 years. The town budget did a similar approach. The town's more consistent, though. 20 years is 2.87%, 15 years is 2.67%, 10 years is 2.98%, and 5 years is 2.85%. So, I cheated the town budget a little bit, and I actually went at a 2.8% increase over the next 10 years. Board of Ed pensions, that's the contribution that town makes to the defined contribution plan for Board of Ed non-certified employees. That's a relatively new appropriation. I don't have a lot of history on it, but based on a limited history, we built in an increase going forward. It's really based on the amount of turnover of non-certified staff that the board has. The debt service is a real number for 24-25. When you get the budget, unless I could think of something to change, for some reason to change it, hopefully reduce it, that's what the number's going to be, okay? That number is based on existing debt, the $11.6 million. That's existing debt as of right now, what we have to pay next year in debt service for our existing debt. So, that number is a real number. That won't... Again, unless I could find some way to reduce it a little bit, that number will show up in your budget and will more than likely be the number that's adopted, shows up in the final adopted budget. The capital improvement number, that number is based on our town policy. To the most... Mostly, it's based on town policy. The town policy, which you adopted at your last meeting, is that you should contribute 2.5% of your operating budget to the... Of your capital budget... I'm sorry, 2.5% of your operating budget should go towards capital projects. So, that's $3.2 million, and that $3.3 million, you see, those are basically 2.5% of the overall total budget. There are some exceptions to that, and if you could go to the next slide. There are some years, if you look at, you'll see where I kept it constant. For example, in '26, '27, and '27, '28, I kept it constant. And the reason for that is, one of the things that we try to do with the budget is, when there's large jumps in debt service, we try to keep the capital budget somewhat level. It doesn't increase, it tends not to increase as much as it should increase, and sometimes it actually decreases. So, if you see between '26 and '27, those debt ser... And '27, '28, those debt service numbers jumped from 14.2 million to 15.4 million. Because there was a large jump there, I actually froze the contribution to capital improvements based on past experience. And if you go one more slide, please. If you look here, you start to see the jump again as debt service goes down. So, again, looking at fiscal year '29, '30, the debt service is 15.6, but in the following year, '30, '31, it goes to 15.4. So, at that point, it jumped the capital... The capital contribution up, started increasing it again. And again, part of that is the whole notion that when debt service drops off, that savings should go into the capital project, go into the capital project contribution for cash projects. And that's really what that factor is going out to 10 years. Looking at debt service, looking, trying to stay with the 2.5% policy, but also balancing it off with changes in debt service numbers as we go forward. Okay, next slide, please. So, then we end up, you know, this just carries it forward going out to the 10th year where your budget's going to be. So, if you're 10 years from now, if all goes right, your budget, your actual overall budget should be about $168 million. Capital projects improvement should be about 4.4. Your debt service will be $14 million, which is going to be where, you know, it's actually going to go back to where we're projecting it will be in '24, '25, and then the rest of it's, you know, the town and the board budgets, where they go. Go to the next slide, please. This biggest component on our revenue side is the revenue we derive from our... For taxes. Taxes support the majority of our budget, and what generates our taxes is the grant list. And the grant list, again, is this section on the budget worksheets, the middle section. This is all the taxable property in the town. You may recall, last year, or I'm sorry, the current year we're in, we had the revaluation, and so the grant, the grant list, the real estate jumped dramatically, increased dramatically, and so did your taxes, unfortunately. What we're projecting, again, using history, we look at how much we project the grant list is going to grow each year. So, the grant list, and again, using 18 years' worth of data on the grant list, we have to fluct... We have to take into considerations wide fluctuations, and we also have to, because of revale and because of some of the economic things that happened in the past 18 years, for example, the real estate crash back in 2010, 2011. So, we go individually to each one of these when we do the forecast, and real estate is the biggest component. You're at three, almost $4 billion in real property in town. A lot of that's generated by, you know, your commercial and industrial property, manufacturing property. You have a very good split in this town, 70-30 approximately. What we did on the real estate is, we projected that in non-reval years, the grant list will increase by... The real estate will increase by a half a percent, so 0.5. It's probably... It's probably a little low for these times, but again, using an 18-year look-back period, that's what it turns out to be, about a 0.5% increase. In revale years, and if you can go forward to...
Second page.
Keep going. Oh, it didn't show up in this one, okay. I'm sorry. If you look at, I think it should have printed out, you have a colored copies?
27, 28.
Yeah, if you look at the years where there's yellow in the real property list, for example, I guess mine didn't print out, okay. In '27, '28, that's our next revale. So, and we have two more revales in this forecast. We're on a four-year schedule for revales. State law says it's supposed to be five years. The state law also said that OPM, the State Office of Policy Management, had to smooth out all the revales in the state of Connecticut. So, we were... And get everybody on a regular schedule and not have an overload of towns in any one particular year. So, we were one of the fortunate ones or unfortunate ones. We're going to do revale for the next four, every four years for the next three revale cycles instead of five years. So, we have a revale coming in '27, '28, and we have a revale coming in '31, '32. So, in '27, '28, the projection is that you will have an increase of approximately 13% in our real estate values. And then in '31, '32, we're looking at approximately 23% increase in our values. That is based on history. That's based on some, where we think the market is today, where we think the market will be three years from now. The thing about these revales is that even though it's taking effect in '27, '28, the values will actually be as of October 1 of '26, so we're only two years away from the next revale. So, and unfortunately, things could change dramatically between October 1 of '26 and July 1 of '27. So, those do impact the real estate. Personal property, that's business property. All businesses in town, their property other than manufacturing equipment is subject to personal property tax, and we did factor in an increase for that. On average, it's about a 2.5% increase. That fluctuates wildly, and there's no consistency to that. And the reason for that is, the state often plays with that number, not so much currently, but in the past, they would play with that number quite a bit. And sometimes things that were exempt, were not exempt, suddenly become exempt. And so, it... Things come off and on the grant list quite dramatically. We've actually had years, you know, looking back over the past 18 years, we've actually had years of negative growth in that because we had to take property off the list, and we've had years of really good growth because we were allowed to add things back on the list. And then the third category of grant list is the motor vehicles. Motor vehicles, again, is another one that fluctuates wildly, but what we used for the forecast was a range, depending upon the year, depending upon different components, that range of increase of 1.25% to a 1.7% increase. The five-year average, what we looked at here for motor vehicles was, is about a 1.5% increase. So, we're... Overall, it averages out to about a... We're using about a 1.25... I'm sorry, yeah, we're using about a 1.5% increase on that overall. So, that basically generates, and I'm giving you this forecast today, and if I were to give you this forecast two weeks from now, I would actually have those numbers for '24, '25, because that number's due to be reported by the assessor on January 31st. So, two weeks from now, I'll know how good I am with that forecast for '24, '25. If you could go through that, you can skip through the rest of them, unless anybody has questions on it. The fourth... The third category, again, going back to here, is what we call revenues, and it's actually more specifically, non-tax revenues. These are the revenues that aren't dependent upon the mill rate. These are tax... There are a wide variety of categories. Just briefly, other property taxes would be, would be delinquent taxes from prior years, would be interest on... And penalties on taxes that are on delinquent taxes. Actually, I have to correct myself. Also in that number is the supplemental motor vehicle tax. If you buy your car during a certain period of time during the year, we have the right to send you a supplemental tax. That's actually going to go away. That's going to... That supplemental motor vehicle tax is going to go away. We're going to have a different... The state has a new process that we have to implement, I believe, in next year, so you're not going to see those tax bills any longer. You'll see a tax bill, you're just not going to see them all come out at one time. You're going to see them come out. It's kind of like you drive home your car, and the bill will be waiting for you when you get home, instead of waiting three months or four months to get the bill. So, so that makes up that category. And it's very slow growth. That category doesn't really grow a lot. The only thing that drives that category is supplemental motor vehicle. And it's kind of an unknown now, what's going to happen with that category because of this change in assessment and billing that we have to go through. And we're also seeing that motor vehicles, the purchasing of motor vehicles has really slowed down, and are actually, our levy this year was considerably less than what we thought it would be for this year. So, this year, we're seeing a shortfall in that category. We think it may carry forward into the future. So, there's a lot of unknowns there. Licenses and permits is the predominant revenue in that category is building permits. That drives that, almost that entire category. The town's having a great time, like most towns are having a very good experience with building permits, especially since the pandemic. Everybody's doing work, everybody's taking out building permits, fortunately. So, that number, we're seeing a significant jump in that number each year, and we built that into the forecast. Fines and penalties, just a small number, it's just, doesn't really, it's not material or significant. Interest on investments, this number's kind of interesting. Right now, this number is high. It's... I can tell you right now that the adopted budget, we adopted $697,000 for this current year. I can't tell you that we're double that right now, as of right now, for the year, so the actual, for the year is actually double that because rates are high, and they continue to climb for us up until this point. But now with the talk of the Fed cutting back on the rates, we're starting to see some pullback on what banks are offering for interest rates, and we'll start to see that number go down. Based on where we see the rates going over the next 10 years, we think that number will slowly go down. You will see it go down to probably in the... We used to see it, which was in the 130, 125, 130,000-dollar range. So, it's like a roller coaster. When rates are high, that number shoots up over... When the rates go low, that number goes down quite dramatically. Right now, if there's, if, as they're saying, the rates are, there's even, say that even if the Fed does three rate cuts next year, right now, we're getting 5% on quite a lot of our money. If they do three rate cuts next year, we'll probably be down to 2.5%. So, and if they continue with the rate cuts after that, that number will probably go down. What, probably, two years ago, that number, the interest rate was 0.2% or 0.1%. Overnight, it jumped to 5%, and probably, it'll go back down as quickly as it went up. So, it's a hard number to predict. It's really dependent on the economy. Grants is another roller coaster number, and I did build an increase in this. The thing about grants is that, the grants we get go as well as the state's budget. So, if the state's in good financial shape, the state's giving us money, and the state's not in good financial shape, the state's taking money away. It's as simple as that, and I can show you the history on that. It looks great that, you know, this year, we adopted $6.8 million. Next year, we're looking at almost $7.2 million. But I could also tell you that in 2009, 2010, that six... We... The state gave us $6.6 million in grant money. After that, that was the peak year. After that, it went down, and went down, and went down, and went down. Pandemic hit, for some reason, the economy got great, and the state started giving us money again. So, that, it is a roller coaster. You know, it goes up and down. We tried to control, the state says they're in great financial shape, they don't perceive problems. We're going to take them at their word, and the assumption's based on the fact that they will not have financial difficulties over the next 10 years, and our grants will slowly grow over the next 10 years. So, I did not try to capture that roller coaster effect. I kept it steady and increased it based on them honoring their pledge to fund education and ECS grant and to fund our pilot grants. But, you know, the other thing I should tell you about the grant is, the largest grant we get from the state of Connecticut is the payment in lieu of taxes for the UConn Health Center. It's not called that any longer. It's called the TIR grant. It is a lieu of taxes grant, and there has been talk about, some uncertainty about the UConn Health Center, so any changes to the UConn Health Center could impact that grant going forward. I'm not saying it's going to happen next year or the year after, but again, we're... This is a 10-year forecast, so, you know, over the course of the next 10 years, if the state does decide to take some action with UConn Health Center, either move it or close it, or whatever they decide to do, that could have an impact on that grant. So, if any of you are here in 10 years from now, you may want to think about that. And then the final one I'd like to talk about on this is the fund balance. And this is always the touchy one for me. The council adopted, they adopted the budget, we appropriated on Kathy and mine recommendation, $1.2 million from fund balance. And anybody who's not familiar with fund balance, that's our RENI-D fund. That's the accumulation of all our surpluses and deficits since the inception of the town. So, we currently have a healthy fund balance, and we felt it was prudent based on the tax increase that was going to happen because of revale to appropriate some money from fund balance, $1.2 million to help defray the tax increase. The problem you do, you have with that is it's a one-time revenue. So, you have two choices when the next year comes. You either go cold turkey and don't appropriate anything, and then you have to make up $1.2 million in revenue that, which you don't have because, you know, you took it in one year, or you step down and basically, and phase it out. So, basically, what I built into this forecast is a step down or a phase out of the fund balance appropriation. So, you had the 1.2 in '23, '24, '24, '25, projecting that you would use $850,000 in fund balance, and then in '25, '26, $500,000 in fund balance. If you go to the next slide. And then in '26, '27, no fund balance. '27, '28, you would go back to using fund balance because that would be a revale year, and I'll show you why in a minute. Then, then when you go to the next, if you go to the next, the next one, that last, yeah. And then in '30, '30, '31, '32, again, using $1 million in fund balance because, again, to help defray the revale that's going to happen in that year. So, if you go to the next slide. So, now we go to the bottom, and you go to the part that everybody always, always looks for. It's called tax and mill rate, this bottom section here. And on the first page, first column, this is what happened this year. You had a budget of $121.3 million. You had a grant list of $4.5 billion. You had non-tax revenues of $13.8 million, and it ended up that you needed the tax levy of $108 million. You needed $108 million to fund, to make up for the budget, and it ended up being a mill rate of 24.21 mills, which was an actual reduction of 5.1 mills, or 17%. But because everybody's residential values went up, the average taxpayer within home assessed at $301,000, had a tax increase of 9.78%. So, even though the mill rate went down by 17%, even though the council kept the budget steady, flat, we still had a tax increase of 9.78%. What happens in '24, '25, based on the forecast that I just presented to you, again, jumping Board of Ed by 3%, Tom by 2.8% increase in the Board of Ed pensions, the increase, the sizable increase in debt service to $11.6 million, doing a 2.5% capital improvement contribution, and keeping everything else that we went through. Your tax, you would have a tax increase next year, or mill rate would be 25.63 mills, it'd be a 1.4-mill increase, or a 5.83% increase in your taxes for next year. That's basically what the forecast shows now. It also shows then in '25, '26, again, with debt service growing, with some growth in the grant list, with some drop-off actually that year in grants, and not, I'm sorry, not in grants, in non-tax revenues, primarily because you're not using as much fund balance. You're still going to have a 1.3-mill tax increase or a 5.1% tax increase that year. The good news is, after that, you do get a reprieve, and you start to have more reasonable tax increases. In '26, '27, it's a 0.66-mill increase or a 2.25% tax increase. In '27, '28, it's a revale, again, with a 13% increase in the real estate grant list, there's a 13% increase in the residential value, so you would actually see a 4.5% increase in tax, the residents would see a 4.5% increase in taxes, even though they're... Even though the mill, the tax rate would go down by 2.2%. And then you go back again to a 3% tax increase in '28, '29. '29, '30, you have a 2% tax increase, 2% in '30, '31, and then you jump up again to a 4.3% tax increase in a revale year of '31, '32. The reason why I actually remember 5.91% last year in February, when we did, I did a forecast in February of last year, the tax increase projected at that time for this upcoming fiscal year was 5.91%. So, we're actually still there. I mean, that's, that's where we thought we would be a year ago, and that's where I think we're going to be next year, based on these variables, okay? And just like, it's... And just like it said about driving to Maine, you know, you can give the Board of Ed 6%, you can give the Town no percent, you can give, you could have no capital budget, that grant list could grow higher, that grant list could go lower. There are other, there are variables in this forecast, obviously. We can try to control for some of the variables. The only variable I could control at this point is, is debt, you know, and that, that number's fixed. All the rest of them are our variables, so, but again, based on history, and I should, I should have pointed this at the beginning. It's amazing to see, when you plot this out over the course of 25 years, or 18 years, or whatever, that a lot of these things repeat themselves. You, you just see it repeating, and it may not be the same dollar, or the same percentage amounts, but the same pattern repeats itself. You'll have years where, you know, the Board of Ed budget increased 2%, the Town budget increased 1%, then you have a couple of years of, you know, 4% and 3%, and then it goes back 1%, 2%. So you, you start to see patterns that take place, and we're in that, you know, it's a very similar pattern taking place now to what you saw actually around the 2000 to 2006 timeframe.
Anything else, Joe?
Glad to take questions, or?
Kathy, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, thanks so much, Joe, you're really an expert in doing these financial forecasts for us. And one of the things, our bonding agencies and our Moody's ratings, and not a lot of towns do these types of forecasts to such detail. And we really, one of the reasons why we have a AAA Moody's rating is because we do the financial forecasts, and they, and obviously, as Joe said, that they're pretty accurate. But that said, I always get nervous, we're going into the upcoming budget, and these are just projections, and we work on it, and there is a ton of variables that go through it, and we still always try to work to whatever we can to get the least amount of impact. But it is trying to just do a historical forecast for you all. And one of the things that you, we'll talk about in with the school project is that, we've talked about for years, is that when the debt came on board for two years, we were gonna see higher tax rates. And that's where we are right now, going into the next year. And so it was forecasted, and so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, is that when we started to see the high school debt, that was when, and that's the year that we're going on, and you can see that by the debt.
Right.
Joe, how is the bonding going for the high school?
We just closed today, or settled today, on a $28 million note sale. We had, we issued notes a little bit ahead of time on this, on this, on the school. We had planned for a sale probably in May. The school's going along great, I guess, and we're paying bills a lot quicker than we thought we would. And unfortunately, the reimbursements from the state were a little slow at the beginning. So we did do notes, right now, we're, we'll do a full bond sale in, in August, but we just did $28 million. So right now, we have a total of $92.5 million in debt issued on the, on the high school. My guess is that we'll probably issue another, probably between another $5 to $7 million on, on the high school. And when all is said and done, that, that would probably be the, the balance of it. That probably will not take place until the summer of '26, I'm sorry, '25, the summer of '25. So that, and, and what'll happen is, and I should, actually, I should, I should, I neglected something I should have mentioned during the debt service. In the future debt service numbers, there are built-in additional bond sales totaling $52 million, okay? So when you're looking at those future years, and you've seen that debt service still being up there in the 14, $15 million range, and we're talking about an additional $52 million in debt being issued. And, and that's for such things as roads, high school fields, it's based on the capital budget, basically, the adopted capital budget. You know, there's money in there for fire apparatus, there's money in there set aside for fire facility renovations, the 1928 building. So all that was actually built into that, debt service, those debt service numbers going out 10 years, so.
And that's still included our elementary schools, too?
Yeah, that includes, that includes $20 million for school facility, school, non-high school, school facilities.
The fire projects, alright, so we have money built in every year for those projects?
Right, right, right. So the smaller issues are easier to manage, most of those, I would not envision any of those issues being greater than $10 million at a time. So those, those issues, in some years, you may even issue less than $10 million, unless you guys come up with a big project, but most of those issues would not be greater than $10 million each year. So they would, they would add to the debt service, but not as dramatically as the high schools adding to the debt service.
Gotcha. Anything else, are you ready for questions?
Yeah.
Dave, you want, have anything for Joe?
The 92.5 million that you said for the high school, that's including the 28 million that you just?
Yeah, basically, we did three issues for the high school at this point. We did, we did a large issue, about $37 million in 2022. We did another $28 million approximately in 2023, and now we did another $28 million in, in 2024. And we'll do another, probably cleanup issue in 2025. Once the, once both projects, once, but the high school is done, all the bills are paid, and once the central office is complete, and once the final, well, probably not the final, but once we get the majority of the state reimbursement money in, we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea as to what we need to issue for the balance, and we'll do a closeout issue on that.
Before we go to Amy, do you have any projection time of when we get the full payment from the state? Are we, does it go in shifts as you do debt out for it?
No, what, what happens with the state is you, you submit to them periodically, based on what you've paid out. So basically, what's happening is every, I'm not sure what was happening before, but Kat and I have now got this schedule going, where pretty much every quarter, whatever we've paid during that quarter, we submit to the state for reimbursement. It takes the state a long time to review it and approve it and actually pay it. Give you an example, we did, we submitted back in April for the central office. It's small, this is really small, it doesn't matter amount too much, but it's a good example. In April, I think it was April 18th or April 20th, we submitted.
Mid-April, yeah.
We submitted for reimbursement for the, for the central office, some expenses we had incurred. We got that reimbursement last week, okay? But we think we're on a good schedule now, and I think Kat's on good terms with the state right now, so, so we think the reimbursements will come in, will come in quicker.
Did you bring cookies to them or something?
So, so we are, we're, hopefully, we're doing it on a quarterly basis, we're, we're getting reimbursed as we spend the money. And the problem with the state are, they're twofold. One is they hold back 5% of each payment, so if you ask them for, for a $10 million reimbursement, they hold back 5% of that. They will not release the 5% until they do their audit or the final closeout. So depending upon when they do their audit or agree that the final closeout, you know, it could be years literally before you get your, your 5%.
Really?
Yeah.
Alright, Amy, anything for Joe?
No, that's a lot of information, I appreciate you going through all that. I don't really have any questions, just trying to take all this in.
I, I did have an additional question.
Go ahead, Dave.
So when you're, when, in the '23, '24 adopted budget, and you have, you know, your interest is obviously outperforming what you, what you had scheduled. That, does that, I mean, that, that windfall or that, that, that delta change, how do you, how do you approach that?
You have to look at the overall budget, and the, the, the budget has two components, it has revenue and it has expenditures. And even though one funds the other, and even though they're tied together when you put your budget together, when you're actually monitoring your budget, they're two different things by law. And, and we're governed by law in terms of how we budget and how we, we're, you know, businesses, you want a pro, it's a profit motive, you want, we're not profit motive, our accounting is geared towards accountability. So if you establish a budget, and you say, this is the maximum amount of money you could spend, you can only spend that amount of money, you cannot go over. On the revenue side, you have to reach that bogey, you know, if you're, you have, if your budget's $121.2 million, you have to raise revenue of $120. Unfortunately, there are a lot, again, variables, there are different categories of revenue. And you have to make sure that if there's a shortfall in one, there may be an overage in one category, there may be a shortfall in another category. Overall, you have to come up to at least $121.2 million. So we, if, and if you do, and if your revenue, and if your expenditures hit or come under what, what they're budgeted, then you have the surplus, that surplus rolls into fund balance. And then the fund balance, you know, you set aside for a rainy day, or in this case, you appropriate $1.2 million, or $850,000, or $500,000 to help offset your future year's taxes or future year's expenses, or go towards a capital project. So that's how, how you basically, you do it. Done a couple of revenue projections, we do have some shortfalls in some. I mentioned the supplemental motor vehicles probably gonna come up short this year. We do have some, we did the reval, we had about 40 tax appeal cases. We're not gonna win any of them, okay? Fortunately, well, hopefully, the taxpayer's not gonna win any of them either. Tax appeal cases, basically, you, you split it down the middle. Or, or, you know, somebody gets 60%, somebody gets 40%. They say their property's worth $6 million, you say it's worth $10 million, you're probably gonna settle at $8 million. The net effect is, we're not gonna get all the taxes on that property that we thought we were gonna get. So that will offset some of the revenue collection, so. So that, we look at just the, the different things, and you try to, try to balance it out.
Which I figured that's what you did, I just, when you close out the budget for '23, '24, and let's say there is a surplus, is that identifiable in some?
Yeah, but you will know it, because I will, in September, Aug, in September of next year, you will get a, a report from me. And it will say, it'll do two things, one, it'll be a request to transfer money. So basically, any expenditure account that ended up over budget, I'm gonna ask you to move money from an expenditure account that was under budget and put it into that, to cover that overage. And I'm gonna give you a report, and I'm gonna say, this is how much we took in revenue by those categories that are up there. And, and this is how much we spent by the, by the broad categories of government, of general government, public safety. This is the net, this is the, you know, this was the result of operation, it was a surplus, or it was a deficit, and this is the new fund balance total.
Keith?
Thank you, Joe. I always appreciate your presentations, because you are so thorough and accurate, and to have a forecast last February that was 5.9, and then to come in here with 5.82, just shows how thorough and good you are at this. I just wanna confirm, I, I had a couple fund balance questions, but, so, but this, this, this '24, '25, you had, I just wanna make sure I write, it's a 3% increase to BOE and a 2.8 for Town? Okay. So just fund balancing for the sake of it, what, what is, what's the fund balance at right now, total? Ballpark is fine?
Around $21 million.
Twenty-one, okay. And then, and then obviously, like you said, that, as far as our Moody's rating and everything, that's, that's the number that we need to be at to, you know, to keep our strong ratings with creditors and so on and so forth, right?
You have a policy that says you would have a fund balance of between a range of 12 and 15%. So that's your, that's your individual policy. Moody's is aware of that policy, and Standard and Poor's is aware of that policy. They like the policy, because the policy has a, a supermajority provision in it, says you could take money from fund balance, but you need a supermajority of you to do so.
Yeah.
And that's what they like. So they would like, and, and actually, when we get the credit reports from them all the time, they say, yeah, you have a AAA, but you know what, your fund balance is kinda weak, even though it's 15%, even though it's 16%.
Okay.
So we still get the AAA, because we are, we are, and we're a solid AAA. I mean, we have AAA's from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's at this point, which is kind of unusual to have. Our fund balance right now, based on this budget, is almost 18%.
Okay.
Okay? So we're, we're well over the 15% right now.
No, that's good, and I'm, you know, not in favor of taking any more, I, I like what you have laid out here. My, my question may be not a great one, but how is that, is that usually funded on budget surpluses? Like, in the past, when we have funded that, has it been funded on budget surpluses? Or has it been a line item in the budget to set something aside for the rainy day fund on years that we've?
No, it just flows in naturally, I shouldn't say, accounting-wise, it just flows in.
Okay.
It's, it's basically what happens is, when you get your audit report, which you should get next, maybe at your next council meeting, I'm not sure. When you get your audit report, there's a statement, and they're called Statement of Income, Revenue, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. And what that does, there's actually two reports, one's on a budgetary basis, one's on a generally accepted accounting principle basis. But the net effect is, they both show you, at the very bottom of that statement, it shows you, here is fund balance on July 1, here was the change to fund balance, here's your new fund balance.
Okay.
So basically, it just flows in, on, on accounting-wise, it just, you know, just, it's kinda like, they just, everything funnels down into a pot.
Alright, so we would be at the upper end of our target of 15% after we take out the 850?
Yeah, basically, if you were to take out the 850, you'd be at 16 point. If you were to take out the 850, and if you were to have a budget expenditure of $128.5 million.
Yeah, and then we also have to factor in that we're taking another half million out next year, and, you know, the way this is built in, we're not
Right.
expecting a giant surplus coming from anywhere, so we're adding stuff back in.
Yeah, I, I would suspect that, I would suspect that barring a disaster on, on the expenditure side, we should have a positive result of, I shouldn't say we should, we will always have a positive result of operation.
Okay.
Okay? But we, so we should have, we should add to fund balance. Now, whether we add $1.2 million to fund balance and offset what we took out this year, that probably won't happen.
That's right, okay.
But we probably will not, I guess the best way to say this, we should not have to use the full $1.2 million this year that was appropriated for fund balance.
Okay.
Some portion of that will be used, but not all, unless, again, if something happens in the next six months that really destroyed our budget, we should not have to use the whole $1.2 million in fund balance. And again, part of the reason is because we have, you know, we're double right now on our interest income.
Correct.
That's all for me. Sarah?
Keith stole some of my questions, so thank you. I just, to clarify, so to make sure I completely understand, if we were to dip below on, on taking money out of the fund balance, below like that 15%, we would threaten our AAA rating, that's correct?
That, that, that's kind of like a hard question to answer.
Okay.
Take the fifth, Joe.
No, 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 you can never, I, I can never say that you're definitely, and I would never say, and I, I won't say, that if you dip below the 15%, you're gonna lose your AAA. And, and, but at the same time, I'm not gonna say that keep staying above the 15% is gonna guarantee you keep the AAA, okay? The biggest flag to a rating agency with fund balance is, is a constant reliance on fund balance to fund your operations, okay? That's the biggest flag. They understand, and, and I went to rating agencies for this note sale, and I went to Moody's back in December, and the guy, you know, their analyst said to me, you used $1.2 million of fund balance this year, I said, yes, I did. And I told him the same thing I, I just told you, I said, I'm probably not gonna use it all this year. So I probably use a portion of it, I probably won't use it all, and I also said to him, I'll probably use more of it next year. Just because I'm, I'm, my recommendation to the council would be is we step down. You can't just make up a $1.2 million hole in, in budget, so we, we would need to step down. And he said, you know, his question, followed question was, is this gonna be something every year? And I said, no, I don't think it is, I can't speak for the council, but my recommendation is at some point, we will, we'll stop appropriating fund balance, you know, we'll take a break from it. But, but at some point, it's there for that purpose. You know, it's, it's supposed to be there for emergencies, but at the same time, it's there for, especially anything over your target, it's, it's there for, it, it, it could be used. Where you see towns getting in trouble is, is the reliance on fund balance every single year in their budget, where they're taking a million dollars every year, they're taking $2 million every year, you know, and, and they're using it to, to offset, and they're getting, they get themselves caught up in that whole thing. Where, you know, if you take $3 million from fund balance this year, what do you do next year if you don't have $3 million in fund balance? You either have to go below your, your level, or, or you have to raise taxes, so. So it, it's just the reliance on fund balance every single year. And then you get, also could get caught up in a deer, and, and I've seen this in towns, I've actually had to experience this in towns, where, where somebody, you know, on the council would say, or the council would say as a party, what's our surplus this year? And I'd say, well, I'm projecting at 600, good, appropriate to 600 for next year. So now, if 600,000 doesn't come in, if we don't have a surplus of 600,000, we have a hole in next year's budget, because we appropriated 600,000. So you, you have to be careful with that, too, because that also perpetuates. Again, it's that pattern of relying on fund balance to finance your operations, and not being willing to either raise taxes or, or cut expenses. and not being willing to either raise taxes or or cut expenses. That's that's where the red flag comes in.
And I think, Sarah, Joe just said it. It's, I think, overall, when you look at your financial picture with the Moody's rating, it's just about a pattern of behavior in general, and they want you to have good good financial practices in general. And so, again, like a revale that shows that we didn't raise our expenditures, but we had a high tax rate, it's like a legitimate reason to use a revale. And we also were saving our money in the in the account, too, well, because we knew revale was coming. And so that helps you out, too. And it's like just a pattern of behavior of stepping down, but also knowing that we're not probably going to use the 1.2 million dollars. So it also keeps us up on that rate. But I think the financial people just look, not just in fund balance, but at just your pattern of behavior of how you handle the budget.
That makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Yep.
Patty.
I have a few questions to follow up on the fund balance question. I know in Connecticut, you have the option of phasing in a revale over time instead of one fell swoop. Is there a financial reason for one or the other?
I have to admit, this one, because my boss will probably remind me. When we were doing the revale last year, and we went to implement it, I said, we should do a phasing. And I went to my assessor and I said, we're going to do a phasing. And I thought he was going to have a heart attack. And he said, we shouldn't do a phasing, we should not do a phasing, that's the worst thing you could do. And I went to my boss, and she said, I said, we should do a phasing. She said, no.
And that's why we didn't do it, no.
There's trouble in West Hartford, wasn't there?
Yeah, no, there was, I think, one, yeah.
The problem with the phasing, right, in under certain circumstances, are you're just pushing out the agony. And what the phasing would have done this past year was just pushed out the agony. You're taking on a lot of debt service this year, next year, and and the year after that. And you're, so that's got to be built into the budget. You have to pay. It's like, you know, it's your credit card. You haven't maxed out your credit card, but you you want to pay more than, you have to pay your minimum balance on your credit card. So that's an increase to the budget. And now you're going to phase in an increase on on the on the taxes. So it's, what would probably happen is, you probably would ended up, instead of a 9.78% tax increase this past year, you'd maybe ended up with a 6% or 7%. And then next year, you'd have a 6% or 7%. And the year after that, you would have had a 6% or 7%. So, you know.
I think, Joe, we maybe would have considered it more if we didn't know that the debt was coming on this year.
Okay.
Because that
Well, we did, yeah, and we did, because
That was one of the problems.
We looked at it, and we said, and and I write, my, my, I said to my assessor, let's look at this. And and he said, here's, here's what the numbers would look like. And I took the numbers, and I did it, I put it into this forecast. And I looked at the numbers, and I looked at the debt and said, yeah, we're not doing this.
Right, that's my point, is that because because of the debt that we knew we were taking on.
No, the joke always is with with all of this, and I I've said it several times, was, you know, when you took the 100 million dollars that we had, the bond for the for the schools, the high school, we should have done it all in one year. Then taxes would have shot up in one year. And then after that, I'd be a hero, because every year after that, taxes would go down.
And we would have had a good rate.
Yeah, yeah, we would have had a good rate. So, you know, in hindsight, being whatever it's worth, maybe in 2020, I should have just issued debt for 100, 100 million dollars and took, you know, had a 16 million dollar debt service payment, and raised everybody's taxes by 20%. But after that, you know, I'd be, I'd look great.
If you survived.
If I survived.
Thanks, that's helpful, because I know it's in the statute, but I know nothing beyond it being in there.
I've I've done phases before in other towns, and it tends to prolong the agony.
Okay. In looking at the mill rate, it's with the revales coming every four years, it looks like our mill rate's pretty much going out, hovering between like the mid 20s. And it's just kind of staying there and creeping up and coming back down. Is it fair to say, I know one of the questions that always comes up is people say, if we keep raising our taxes too much, residents are going to move out, they're going to go to another town. Is it fair to say that other towns would experience something similar where their current mill rate is going to probably go up and come back down and go up and come back down? I mean, is it, is this unique to Farmington, or is it?
No, revales are built to do that. Reval, revales are, revales, the purpose of revales is to rebalance everything. You know, you see a lot of towns where, not so much in Connecticut anymore, but towns in Massachusetts, for example, would never do a revale. So I I know somebody who lived in Springfield, and their assessment was based on a 1940 value on their house. Their mill rate was over 100 mills. So they were paying the same amount in taxes, but they were paying, you know, they were paying 100 mills on a on a $4,000 valued house, which probably was a $200,000 valued house. And and revales are supposed to be to re balance the mark. You you come up to market value, and because you come up to market value, your your tax rate should come down, everything being equal. And that's what should have happened, and that's what, well, it did happen in this last revale. What didn't happen in this last revale was, the values didn't go up sufficiently enough to bring that mill rate, that tax rate down to a to a point where you had more more of a balance.
And we had a shift from the commercial to the
Right, and you had that shift. And you're one of those unique towns. You know, you get a lot of towns where they don't have that 70, 30, they they don't get to see that. They, you know, they say, well, it's great, you know, the the mill rate goes down, and the taxpayers, you don't see that shift back and forth so much. It's not a good thing, because the other four, five years, the residents are paying more in taxes in, you know, more of the tax burden than in the commercial. So so in one year, the commercial to get a break, you know, versus five years when the resident, or four years when the residents get a break.
Looking at your projections for expenditures, this, for 23, 24, I'm assuming that it's based on the three point, the 3% increase that you just estimated, and the 2.8, so 3% for education and 2.8 for town. Last year was a weird year. So although we took a million dollars from fund balance, there were also additional reductions to the budget in order to keep it at a flat rate. Expenditures had to go down, because there's natural increases just with the increase of cost of services, increases in salary. So I guess my question is, for this year, is is 3% a reasonable, a reasonable number as compared to last year for expenditures? Because in reality, the is the better comparison point from two years ago so that we could restore some of what's been?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, again, I use historic, those are variables that are beyond my control. So I have to use historical, I have to rely on historical data as to what takes place. And I can tell you that, you know, I'm looking at, example, one year, the Board of Ed got a 2% increase, next year, they got a 4% increase. One year, they got a 2.75% increase, and next year, they got a 2% increase. So, you know, it's, I mean, it averages out. I mean, in looking, doing the 25-year look back, saying that they were getting a, I'm sorry, doing a 20-year look back, saying they were getting an average of 3.3% increase, you're talking about some years in there where they were getting 6% increases, okay? Some years, they were getting a 1% increase. And the town side, looking at a 2.84, you're looking at years, one year, they got a 0% increase. You know, one year, I think the highest year on the town side was a 4%.
So, long term, the 3% this year may not be accurate, but looking at the 10-year forecast, you should balance out over those 10 years.
More unlikely what's going to happen.
Okay.
And again, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't look at the Board of Ed budget from year to year. Now, you look at it based on the 10-year forecast. I do look at the town budget on a year-to-year basis. I know what, I know what the ideal number is for the town budget. I think I know what the ideal number is for the town budget for next year, okay? So
Maintain services.
To maintain, well, to maintain, yeah, to maintain services. I think I know what the number should be. But, you know, I, but, you know, Kathy works with whatever number she gets, you know?
And one of the things, Patty, I think, is, one, and you guys will know it, you see it in the numbers, too, is that what was the expenditures last year on both the education and town were definitely lower than the averages. But where the money came from, obviously, was the capital projects.
Right, okay.
Where even though we, you know, we really went from 1 million to, you know, we, I'm sorry, we went from 3,800,000 to 1 million dollars. So we cut 2.881 out of the capital budget. The board last year got a 2% increase, and the town got a 1.97, and our debt service went up 7%. So there was expenditures. We made up for that expenditures, the majority on the capital side.
Thank you, I appreciate, that's a good clarification. A couple minor questions. The tax appeals that are pending to the, their timing with respect to the resolution and our budget process and knowing what our grant list is, what does that look like?
It could be tomorrow, it could be next year, it could be two years. The assessor and legal counsel settled a tax appeal from 2017, last October. We just, the assessor and legal counsel on yesterday, yeah, yesterday, settled a tax appeal that was filed last March. So it it really depends upon how far people want to go, how far the taxpayer wants to go with it, and how soon they can get to court, and whether it actually goes to litigation. I mean, we had 70 appeals, I think, in 2017. One went to court, one went to litigation. Everything else was settled over the course of five years, or six, four, six years, or whatever. Everything else was settled, but one did go to litigation. I don't think any of the ones now, I'm sorry, I think one will go to litigation now.
And in terms, if there's, I mean, 40 sounds like a lot on the one hand, but on the other hand, in terms of our overall budget, does it have a meaningful impact?
Depends how long they get dragged out.
Okay.
Okay? Because what what happens is, the taxpayer does have to pay the tax, or pay a portion of the tax. They don't have to pay the full amount of the tax. But once, if it does drag out over the course of several years, and if the appeal, once it is settled, more than likely, there is a rebate or a deferment of taxes. Give you an example, we had one of the appeals that was finally settled on the 2017 list, was settled, I believe, in 2022. The settlement was such that that we ended up, they did not have to pay any taxes for '22 and '23, because they had overpaid their taxes for for '17, '18, '19. And so we basically gave them a $300,000 tax break over over the course of two years. So, yeah, they, there could be somewhere that, again, depending upon when they're settled and what the assessment discrepancy is, there's some that could be material.
Thank you. Last question. I know from prior conversations with you that ideally, our debt service is going to, will stay level over time instead of fluctuating, and that's better for our rating, and it's more known about what the expenses are. Is there an ideal or a goal percentage ratio? Because you have the debt to budget ratio in here. I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a target that you're looking for.
Yeah, if you if you look, go over to the bottom on your sheets, you go all the way to the very bottom, there's this little thing called debt to budget, and there's those little percentages. Goal is to keep it under 10%. So your debt service budget to your total budget should not be greater than 10%. That's that's one metric. We're going to have some years there of slightly above 10%. We have a 10.6, I believe we go as high as a 10.8, but we have a 10.7, I think. Yeah, there's a 10.8.
10.7 is highest.
Yeah, so there's some years where we're going to be over 10. The metric would be to be under 10. But there are other metrics that also drive our consideration on debt. So, you know, there's the debt to per capita, there's there's debt to population, there's debt to, I'm sorry, debt to, debt to per capita income, debt to population. And the big one for us is debt to grant list, full, full value grant list. And and that's one of the things about, you know, Farmington is, you have a large grant list. You have one of the largest grant lists in the state of Connecticut. And it was just the envy of a lot of towns. So that ratio of debt to to full value grant list, it always looks pretty good. And because of that, you know, that's that's a metric that, you know, I could, the rating agency could say, well, you know, you're over the 10%. And I could say, yeah, but look at my, you know, debt to full market, look at my debt to per capita income. You know, that does, that does help the the situation.
And and Joe, one, again, talking about like kind of pattern of behavior, is that one of the things I think with the debt, too, is trying to have it balanced, too. It's just a little bit over 10, and it's not going like you're not spiking up to 17%. And then you do, like, keep on going like that.
Right, I remember, it has to be steady.
You're trying to do that, and if you have legitimate reasons, like you've taken on a new high school and have done this, you can see a few years that why you would go over a little bit. But I think, again, with the pattern of behavior, they don't like to see like substantial things going up and down just financially.
Right, and I think if you do look at the debt service going out, you will see that, I mean, it's at a higher level than, but it it does level out. I think we level it out around the 14, I mean, we're going from, we're bouncing between 14 and 15 million dollars each year. So I think, you know, back for the past 10 years, we were looking at, the goal was to always keep debt service around 8 million dollars to 9 million dollars a year. And and basically, if it went below 8, anything below 8, we would throw into the capital budget. Anything that went above, you know, we would start, we would cut back on the capital budget. And we, I tried to keep debt service at that point in that range of of 8 to 9 million dollars a year. With the high school, and with some of these other projects that are coming on board, your your new bogey is more than likely going to be looking at a debt service budget going forward, probably in the 14 to, you know, 14 and a half million dollar range. That 8 million dollars is going to jump up for the next 20 years and be in that 14 million dollar range. So I think the goal would be, you know, at least for the next 10 years, you know, don't go above, I mean, don't go above the, like, I guess I got a couple of 15 sixes in there and stuff, but, you know, you probably, you don't want to go much more. You want to stay at that level, or get back down to the 14 at some point. And you will see that at some point, a lot, a lot of our older debt is, will start dropping off. And if some of these projects don't come, you know, to fruition, or get, if the timing on them is a little different, you could see those numbers balance out. We have a substantial debt drop, a debt service drop-off, I think, in about three years, which, that's not reflected here, because I built in the new debt.
Right.
But if you look at the existing debt, there's a substantial drop-off, and I believe it's in three years. And instead of letting it drop off, we filled it with new debt going on.
And I forget, Joe, do you present that, like, what our debt service looks like during the budget?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Brian.
Thank you. Joe, I just want to say thank you to you and your team, Kathy and your team, for everything that I see here. It's obvious that we're in a really good position, as tough as last year might have been. And I just had one question for my curiosity, and that is, one more fund balance question. I see that we've, you know, had the fortune to be able to to use that to make taxes palatable for the town. We're using it for three years to about 2 and a half million. But then we have one year off, and then we have our revaluation, where it goes up for 800. And my question is, is that one year enough time to maybe replenish it enough where it keeps us in a good place? And obviously, you're already planning for that, but that is kind of my question, are we planning for that?
Basically, my plan is to, the for, my my plan, the forecast plan is to make sure that the fund balance stays around 16%. Okay, that's, when I built it in, I built in the idea that if certain things happen, where would fund balance be, and we appropriated fund balance in certain years, how much could we appropriate in those years and still keep a fund balance of around 16%? So the one, you know, the one variable that you always have to, and it's kind of a funny, when you start playing the game with fund balance and percentages, is, you know, sometimes you don't have to add to fund balance, but it depends on what happens with your budget. Because, you know, part of the reason, idea is, you know, as actually, as your budget increases, your fund balance has to increase a certain percentage in order, a certain amount in order for it to stay at that same 15 or 16%. Because, you know, you're dividing 121 million into, you know, into 21 million dollars, you know, gives you a 17.8% fund balance. Dividing 128 million dollars into a 21 million dollars gives you considerably less fund balance, percentage fund balance. So so it is a balance, it's, I hate to use the word, but it's it's a balancing act sometimes as to what, you know, fund balance is going to be, and what your budget's going to be, and how to maintain it around the 16%. gonna be and how to maintain it around the sixteen percent. You know, if I were probably, you know, and I, and I struggled with this, I, I also thought about stepping down fund balance in, in that second, the second time we use it. And, and it's enough that, you know, at that point, I would just probably couldn't afford to do that, I'd probably just go cold turkey and, and take the hit the next year.
Okay, I'm just curious. And I actually have one other question, and that is something that crept up, I believe it was two years ago, where we had an additional week of, of pay for town employees. Does that hit in the same year as our revale? Because I believe we paid that last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Paid it.
We put it off from a year before, I think.
Paid it two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago, we paid it off the last year or something.
It was two.
It should hit, no, it should hit, I think it was in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
So it should hit in thirty-one, thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
It should hit in thirty-one, thirty-two.
So I remember that that was an issue a couple of years ago, so I'm wondering if we're kind of planning for that, you know, coming up. Figured today would be a good day to mention it.
What about leap year? We got an extra day.
Leap year.
Yeah, we, we attempted to plan for that the last time it happened and we failed miserably. So I don't think we would plan for it this next time. I think, you know, there were some options for, there's, there's no way you get around that. Everybody has it. I mean, it, it, most people, a lot of people don't realize it, especially if you're on a calendar year, cycle, but everybody has a twenty, an extra pay period every so often.
Right.
So I think you could, you know, you could try setting aside funds for it or you could just adjust for it when you come to that time in the budget process, which was what we did the last time.
Yeah, just the way it hit, it would seem to be a little bit of a problem. I'm wondering if we're kind of looking forward and kind of putting some stuff aside for, to, for that.
Yeah, we.
Thank God it's ten years though, right?
Yeah, right.
It's every ten years.
Yeah, oh, it's every ten years. Oh, I didn't know how often it was.
Yeah. I think in the past I misspoke and I think I probably said it was every seven years, but we went back, I went back and looked at it, it's every ten years.
Oh.
So.
You've got some time.
We won't be here.
You hope. Got some time.
All right, I just wanted to ask, thanks. And again, thanks for everything you do.
Any other follow-up questions for Joe? Joe, you handed out certificates since we've been schooled so well today.
Sorry?
You handed out certificates for the schooling you gave us, this classwork?
No. You know, my, my goal is just to let you know, my goal is just to be realistic about things, you know. The one thing I always tell people is, is if you don't know something or if you have a question, ask it. My concern is that if I sit here, I'm, I'm probably gonna get myself in trouble. We, we had a council and, and, and I got up here one day and I'm explaining stuff and I looked and everybody was glassy-eyed and nobody said a word. And I just went back and I sat in my seat and I said, they didn't understand a word or anything, anything I said. So I prefer that you ask questions. If you don't understand something, you don't want to ask it in public, call me up, email me. If you want to ask it in public, feel free to ask me in public. The more you know of what I do and how I do it, the less surprised it'll be later on. The worst thing, you know, I don't want you to come back to me and say, you know, why the heck did, why the heck did debt service go up to fourteen million dollars next year? You know, that was a mistake, because we issued ninety-two million dollars in debt, you know, for, for up the hill. So I just, just, just ask the questions and, and I don't get offended by it, I welcome them, because it also keeps me accountable and it keeps me on my toes. So, you know, I, I'm not perfect. I mean, I was off by what, five basis points?
Yeah, you better mark that down on the calendar, Joe's not perfect.
I still want to kill to the king though.
Yeah, we'll work on the walk-up music.
Thank you very much, Joe. I appreciate all your time and all the effort you put into this to make it easy for us to understand. Onto number two.
Agenda item D two, make a motion to set budget targets for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year.
Second?
All right, we have a motion in a second, Kathy?
So in your packet, and some of this Joe has talked about a little bit, but we have some budget histories from nineteen ninety-five, we have expenditure averages, we have tax rate histories, we have general fund CIP allocation history, just as a note, that is one of the ones that are, goes up and down, up and down quite a bit as you've seen from last year. And we have expenditures versus tax rate comparisons. And that's something new that we've been putting in, is that just as Joe has described, that we do have such a great grand list that sometimes that we can have higher expenditures than our tax rate. So a few years where our overall expenditures were higher than what the tax rate was because the grand list grew so much, you were able to spend more. So there are years that we've had that too. In the past, the town council has set budget targets for the, myself and for the Board of Education. At times, the town council has set expenditure targets, at other times, it was an overall tax rate was given. Some years, the town council has set a target range and other years, a specific number. In the past, the town council has provided general policy direction regarding the budget. For example, you know, we'd like, usually, I always start the budget that we would like to continue to maintain services at the level that we are today. That's usually kind of where we, our benchmark. All information needed to compile the budget, including revenues and state aid, is not available at this time. So again, I'm aware that sometimes setting a target, even on my side and on the Board of Education side, it's difficult when there's not all the information that's available. That's, you know, the information sometimes, in the old days, we wouldn't get the information from the state sometimes up until almost the council was done with the budget. And so it is difficult, we don't have all the information, but we do have our forecast. And on my perspective, it is helpful to have some sort of target from where you go because, again, it's, it's a lot easier to put money back into the budget than it is to take money out of the budget later on in the process. It's just if, so that's one of the things that in the past, the council has stated, whatever the target is, but to keep a list of things that are not getting, putting into the budget because of the target. One of the things that we talk about is that the goals and what is in the budget, it starts at zero base, but then also is based on the strategic plan and what your goals are based on the strategic plan. I review some things every budget season. First, I look at fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at high standards. Second, I review the entire budget for cost-saving measures. And lastly, I review potential budget drivers. And then I've just listed a few things that, so the council can be aware of, is right now, the cost of living is three point four percent as December twenty twenty-three. We do have collective bargaining agreements, three contracts are up for negotiation this year, our ASME, which is our largest union, our SEIU supervisors and our SEIU non-supervisors, which are smaller, much smaller unions. For settled contract, our fire union and for police, the COLA for both of those is two point seven five percent. Employees covered under the police contract are also receive an init, an initiative, an incentive pay of one percent. In general, all data is showing that employment contracts are going up. All data is showing that on the municipal side, on municipal meeting, the town side. Last year's budget appropriation of one point two million dollars from fund balance as a revenue line item and consideration as Joe, how that's gonna be addressed this year and Joe spoke about that. The other thing is, is that again, we did have a one million dollar, a capital budget, which is very, very small, and that was a reduction of seven, seventy-four point two three percent. Joe did add back in the three point two to meet our policy, but that is a number that we are making up quite a bit on the, the capital. And, and I think that is it for me.
Any questions for Kathy? Dave, you have anything?
Not at this time.
Amy?
No.
Keith? No, sir. Sarah?
No.
Patty?
No questions.
And Brian?
I actually just have one quick question. That is, a lot of capital expenditures got, expenditures got taken out from last year. I imagine they're still there and might need to be addressed this year. I know we don't know at this moment, but that would certainly have an impact if we were to try and address some of those, you know, pretty significant needs, not luxury needs, their need needs. So I'm kind of thinking about those things and considering this.
Yeah, for, for sure. It's, it's unfortunately, you know, the capital and it's not signif, not, Farmington's not alone in this, it's that the capital is sometimes what gets cut when things need to be cut. But unfortunately, if you keep on cutting the capital budget, you get yourself in a situation where you wind up spending a lot more money or you, you get yourself in problems. And we have over the course of time, really have tried hard to stick to our capital policy as much as we possibly can. Last year was, you know, basically desperate times, but you'd hate to see us, you know, keep at that type of a level. That would not be good financial planning, but, you know, it is hard to jump back up to that level. And, you know, my staff will tell you that, what, the number of three point two percent, I mean, three million two is not a lot for capital to begin with, you know, honestly. That's, it's, that's a, I would consider a pretty low number for all the buildings, maintenance, equipment, that townwide that we have.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking about. It's kind of looming out there.
Yeah.
But like you said, we don't have any numbers to really, go on.
No, not right, not yet. We're still, you're gonna be doing the capital budget in, we'll be presenting at our, at our second meeting in February.
All right, anything else for Kathy?
So I think in order to, I think we should try to figure out where we should be for the town. And I think, this is my opinion, and obviously we're all here to discuss it, is probably try to stay where Joe has given numbers in order to figure out where we're gonna fall. I think it gives the opportunity for, you know, the town side here to figure out everything we discussed last week about our strategic plan, can things be implemented into it? Obviously, we have done serious cutbacks last year from going from three million to one million dollars, so I'm sure there's probably some of those capital projects that need to come back up and start looking at again. And obviously, we don't know where the, the Board of Ed's gonna come in, but I don't think, by us setting a, a number today, it doesn't prohibit them from doing what they need to do. And then when they come and present to us in March, we can always go back and forth and figure out what's a healthy balance for them to get their operating done and what they need to do to accomplish their goals and objectives. Any other thoughts? Brian, we'll go with you.
Um, my only initial thought is, you know, I'm really glad we have the numbers that Joe has us to work with, which is historical data. And I'm also looking at the practical of what the needs are based on what happened last year, which I don't know if those things match up. That's where I have a question about how we move forward, because there's things that we need to do to keep us on top of things, you know? And I don't know if that means we do things based on historical data, rather on real need. That's my only thought.
Yeah. Patty?
So I, I hinted at this with my, one of my questions to Joe, last year was a complicated year. I think it's, I appreciated Kathy's clarification that a lot of those reductions did come from capital, but I also know on the Board of Ed's side, there was an eight hundred thousand dollar reduction to the expend, to expenditures, not just capital. And some of those weren't true reductions last year because they were moved and funded by ESER grants. Those funds are no longer available, so anything that's being funded by ESER has to come back into operating. I missed last night's Board of Ed meeting, but the one, two weeks ago, the technology budget is increasing, is proposed to increase by a hundred thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars of that is what was funded before on ESER. And I think it's just a complicated year moving forward. I think there's a lot of things that weren't covered last year. I think we have a lot of goals with the strategic plan. And from my perspective, similar to what Brian said, it's, the challenge is how do we know what that number is without having any real information about what we need and what the cost is of what we're looking for? And while I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't be in favor, I'm gonna use a really astronomical number just for giggles, but I would not be in favor, say, of a ten percent budget increase, because that's way too high. But if the number is, you know, three percent or four percent or five percent, I, I don't know where that stands without knowing what, what the costs are of some of the things we discussed in the strategic plan at the last meeting.
Sarah?
I guess, you know, I think, Joe, what you're asking for, you know, is a target, right, to look at?
Exactly.
And I, I hear your concerns because I, I, I don't know what those numbers are either, what, what the BOE is gonna come forward with, what they think they're gonna need or even to the extent of what we need for capital and all the, the different budget numbers. But if we're looking for a target to give guidance, the only thing we have really right now to go on is sort of that historical data, which if you look at now, even just based on what Joe gave us, is a six percent tax increase too. So just kind of understanding all that, I'm, I think I'm comfortable giving that, going with, with Joe's numbers as a target, with the understanding though, that this is a flexible process and we'll learn more later. Is that fair?
Oh, yeah, obviously, you know, I think Kathy and Joe said, like, there's a lot of unknowns that still need to come out as far as revenues, you know, showing up to state information and what they're gonna be, still be able to project for our, towards the grants and the pilot programs. So there is a lot of different variables, I just think, by giving us sort of a guidance that helps them hone in where they need to be. And then as each, you know, department of Kathy presents to us what the, their goals and objectives are, what they need, you know, we go ahead and make our decisions. And obviously, Patty knows and you know, the Board of Ed comes in and they start discussing that they need this, this or this, and they can offset that because this increased, this decreased. So it gives us a better idea to what we can move around. But I think not sort of giving us sort of an ideal number sort of puts them, I think, sort of backwards by saying, oh, come in where you come in. And then obviously, we're already at a six percent just by the historical numbers, what if we're gonna be at that ten? How, how much now they have to start really cutting back and cutting back and cutting back just to get us back down to a six? So again, everything's flexible, I'm just trying to give them some guidance in order to move forward. And again, the whole part of the budget process is, is for them to make their case to us and for them to teach us and make us understand why they need to do A, B, or C.
Keith?
So I think I've been the lowest target giver the last two years that I've been on council and, as Kathy said, we're in the midst of a pretty tough five-year run that we knew was coming, given the, the financing for the high school. Last year was what it was. I'm more comfortable with a higher target than I've given the past couple of years because of everything that we've already, you know, discussed. But we also do have to remember, if you look historically at our tax increases, minus other reevaluation years or, or, you know, major things happening, a five point eight two tax increase is, is a pretty big number for us to put out there. So I would tend to go right in line with what Joe said as well, which would be to be looking for around a three percent from the schools and then two point eight from the municipal side, understanding that, as Joe said, we are not taking any money out of the budget, we're not spending any money tonight. We are just saying, this is where we get to something that historically is where the town has always been. And as Joe also said, these things tend to run in cycles. He's saying, you know, this looks like a familiar cycle that he's seen before. And I think when we talk about how good he's been at these presentations, how close he's been on them, you know, how, where he's coming out in the next ten-year run, I mean, we do get to, we have a few more revaluations, but we get to a pretty comfortable place once we get through some of this other capital spending if we can, you know, maintain a level of spending that is affordable for years to come. So I, I think understanding that where we would like to spend more to replace everything from last year, if we do that, we're gonna have a really, really, another really big tax increase number, which on top of inflation, everything else, is a real burden to everybody in town. And so I would go in with numbers similar to what Joe gave us and then have the conversations, the typical decisions when people come in, you know, with their departments, everything.
Amy?
I agree exactly with what Keith just said. You know, this is still preliminary and it's still gonna move. So I, I'm not familiar with the whole process because this is my first, my first time through it, but it sounds like Joe's numbers are within range of reality.
Dave?
The, the question I have is to Kathy a little bit, is some years the town council has set a target range? That's, that's in your, your documentation. I'm just curious, like, do you, do you remember like what those ranges maybe were?
Yeah, I, I would say that, you know, it may be that on the town side, because we're pretty much right around the same time, it would be something, especially if the council would say, hey, if you can get in closer to two, we would like that, but if we can get up to two point five, because I would say something along the lines of, listen, it's gonna, it's, two point five is pretty close to what it would take to run things and it would be harder, but the council may say, hey, listen, go at two, try to go in at two, but if you can go up to two point five, because one of the things that has been very consistent on the town side is that what your target is, is for me, is what you are going to get. And so sometimes there would be more of a range about that, just to give And so, sometimes there would be more of a range about that, just to give me some more flexibility, because how we've usually have operated here is that if you've said two percent, then that's the number that you've gotten, and so, they've possibly have given such a a range. I would say, I can't, thinking back, that they have not done that in a while, I think it's been more a pretty set number.
Because that's, that's kind of where I'm falling, is that I think, you know, I think setting hard, a hard target, I think, is very helpful, like Kathy said, like, you you can work against that target, and you can, you know, know what what that number is. I agree with Keith. Joe's presentation was excellent, and the number is, you know, it's it's not a small number. But I'm just wondering if we can, if we can put a target together that gives the flexibility a little bit to the town and to the BOE, to be able to kind of come in with their presentations and think about that range, and let us know in that flexibility, like, what what's on, what's on, what's on the docket that we don't get if we, you know, move that number one way or the other? So, I'm just, I mean, because I do think it's a complex, you know, we have this debt service that's kind of coming up, there's a lot of moving parts, right?
Oh, yeah.
Like, you know, what Patty said about the grants that are going to fall away, it seems to me for us to get our hands around it a little bit in a more, in a more clear way, I think a range would give us maybe that that avenue to to mitigate that. I mean, I I kind of look at it like my business, you know, you take a business, you're in the architect business, some people want to know the per square foot cost to build a building, you know what I mean? They want to lock in, they want to lock in a number. And I would, I always tend to back away from that, because you don't, you can just match a number, but sometimes you're never presenting any options where that person is actually getting the input on what what a number might be if it was a little different, you know, you know, that, so that's what I'm, so that's kind of, that that's where I'm trying to mitigate this a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I I understand what you're saying, and I think Brian could attest to it, and Keith, you know, as we did budgets for the last, you know, couple of years, we've had those numbers in place, but again, it doesn't prohibit and never stop the BOE to come in and say, hey, I know you said this, but we're over here, and this is why we're here, and they explain A, B, and C to us, to what that reasoning is. So, they never just came in off the cuff and said, hey, at your meeting, you said, you know, three percent, we're here at three percent, here's your budget. So, they always come in prepared, and they'll show the back history and what the driving forces are for them to be at, if we say three, or three, or three, three, or three, four, or four, or five, six, one, whatever that may be, you know, they will come in and say something.
I also think if I was running a department and I got a budget range, and it was like two point eight to three point two, I'm probably going to come in with a three point two and tell you exactly why I need to get the upper end of that range. And I, and to Joe's point, too, if we set the range for BOE at three percent, there's nothing precluding them coming in here with a twenty five percent, you know, or, you know, I mean, hopefully that wouldn't happen, because that would be, we'd be miles apart, and we'd be a long budgetary process, but my point being, there is no, if there's no or else in this, you know, it's it's always going to be a process as we go through it, and I just, you know, the the, we had, we had the range discussion last year, I remember. To Kathy's point, we were, we were close to to doing a range, but we had the same conversation, which was, if we give, I think it was like, two point two five and to one point five, we figured we would just end up with a one point five number, and that's what we went with, or it was something like that, I have my numbers mixed up, but it was the same sort of discussion that we felt like in the end, a a hard number actually made it easier, where a range feels like it's being easier, sometimes these things, like just distilling it down, what do you need, you know, what would be cut, because Kathy's also going to present it, too. Last year, when we gave that hard number, she came in and she said, if we do this, we will lose, I remember, we lost services on our Greenways path. We we cut a position or two from Town Hall, I remember, and Kathy said, if if this is where we need to be, this are, these are the services that we will lose in town, period. And then now it's up for us to make the discussion, or make the decision, I should say, have a discussion, is this something that we can live with going forward? And so, at that point, if we said, no, we need that service at the Rails and Trails, then Kathy would say, okay, well, then my budget will be two point eight five, or whatever the the case may be, and so, that's why I don't, I wouldn't want us to get too zeroed in on that this is the final, the final say on budget, you know?
I think the hard part for me is this knowing at the, the numbers that Joe gave us, we're already at a six percent.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't disagree.
That's the hard part, it's like, how do I fathom that one, knowing from last year, which was no fault of our own, to reevaluate? Well, I guess it is a fault of our, we make people come into town, we we give them great services, a school, so they're coming toward town, they're paying upwards, you know, and upwards in order to move here and live here because of what we do provide, you know, and obviously, it's education, taxes, and services, so we got to keep those three in mind. So, I think if we start opening that number up even more, it's harder to come back down. So, if, for, we're starting at a six now at this number, then how do we start breaking it back down? So, I think if we start, keep it reined in a little bit, and then as they come and present, obviously, they will say, you know, we need this, or we need that, and then it gives us more understanding, there were flexibility to say, all right, we can move this, move that, and obviously, Joe will have more numbers for us, too, and we can, you know, have better understanding what numbers are coming in, if it's going to help us that, our fund balance, or, you know, the grants of the state, or, you know, he was wrong about this, and motor vehicle surplus even more. So, I think there's always room for us to grow as discussions take place, but I think by putting these numbers where Joe gave us, I just think this gives a clear path, just for them to start their process for us and really sit down and really start hammering it out. I don't really think, I'm not trying to, you know, handcuff anybody as far as what they need, you know, Kathy knows what she needs, the superintendent knows what she needs, you know, and they're they're going to present it to us, and hopefully, we can keep that number honed into where we are today, and make it palatable for everybody to, you know, accept that budget and vote on it.
My biggest driver with the budget, too, and is that there was this, you know, discussion had a few years ago when we did the high school project, and as I came on council, that was the year after the project was approved, and it got, had gotten going. And one of the discussions that was had was that we were going to do our, we understood that these, you know, the debt service was going to come up, and it was going to affect the budget, and to do our best to keep stuff tight, and then the revow whacked us, but as Joe said, we're like two years away from another revow, too. So, it's like, if we don't, if we aren't careful, we're just going to, you know, trip right into another revow, which could, you know, if we're not careful with how we spend stuff now, we could just be compounding a problem as we go, you know, through.
And I think the history, too, I think the taxpayer has really put a lot of faith into us, because that, when this last vote came in for the additional money, is a still a two to one favor in order to get that additional money, and then the vote before that to get the hundred and forty was another two to one favor. So, they they know that, you know, when something's big here, we go all out, and we really push for it, and we try to find the best way to get it done for them without really socking it to them, and I think those two to one votes really show you that they have confidence in us to do the right thing, and then knowing and looking forward to what may be coming up, just to keep on plugging along, just stave off a little bit money more in their pockets, instead of just, you know, hammering them, hammering them year after year.
So, Joe, I I appreciate that the town voted two to one in favor, and I agree, it does show a lot of faith in this council, or the prior councils and overall Farmington. But the prior high school project failed, the high school has been in need of updates, I don't know how long.
Yeah.
And I I worry about setting a target that creates a boundary that we end up not hearing about the potential of what should be done, what could be done, and I truly trust Kathy to prepare a budget, that this is what I need, this is what I suggest, and for that reason, I understand that a target's beneficial, but I want to push back a little bit on the concept that if a range is provided, that the budget, if the range is, say, two point eight to three point one, just to put a number out, that the budget's going to come back at three point one, because we gave that range. I I think that's, I I just don't know that that's a valid assumption.
I I get it.
We could test it, I mean, but, I mean, I I think it is, well, so, I mean, I guess that's where our thing, I do think it's a valid assumption.
We know where you stand, Keith.
We know.
I think, I think if you say to somebody, hey, you know, for the year, you can spend two point eight, or you can spend three point one, you know, there's a lot of reasons to spend that extra percentage, and I, and and probably very valid reasons, too. And again, I've said it three times, it'll be the last time I say it, I promise, if we say the target is three, and they come in at three point one, we can then say, you're right, and you need that stuff, and we're going to give it to you. So, it it's not a hard wall that we're putting up for them or for us, it's a, this is what we've seen, based on our forecast from the King, and and, you know, where we think we need to be. And if they say, we understand what you're saying, but this is where it has to be because of X, Y, and Z, then at that point, that's where we have those discussions. And so, again, if 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 everybody really feels more comfortable, I'm, I'll go with that, I just, you know, we'll test the theory and see what happens.
No, like I said, I think, like I said, again, last year, case in point, we went back and forth with the BOE, you know, we we had the number in place, they were hired, we went back and forth, they discussed everything, and at the end of the day, we all settled upon where we needed to be, and it went through. So, I don't think it's really going to preclude the BOE from doing what they need to do in order to present their budget to us. I really don't. I've never seen it before, ever say, hey, you can't, you said three, and we're in at three, so it's always like, feels like it's a negotiation.
When you guys did BOE budgets last year, did you, was, did you feel an encumbrance based on budget targets?
We were told what the town council would approve, and that's what we approved.
Okay, and you didn't, and, so I guess my question would be on on board side, is if there is ever robust discussion about, you know, bucking that and coming into something different or whatever, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to, I'm certainly not looking to, you know, the the goal was to be united as possible, right, so everybody sees what the forecast looks like, you know?
So, I I think that's kind of where I'm at with just Patty on that, it's just that I, you know, I think this is a great discussion, but I think that's, that to me, I think sometimes when the target message goes out, it's, you know, it's pretty clear that that's the target, you know what I mean, and and, you know, and the the mission at hand is to, you know, match the target, which, you know, makes complete sense, but if if there's things that are, if these grants are falling, I'm just in in that specific case, if these grants are falling off, and they're, and we know that there's going to be the technology budget or whatever that Patty Patty just mentioned, I'm just focusing right now on on the things that she had mentioned. I mean, there, you know, I mean, you, it, I think there's, there's, there's discussions to be had, maybe, in that, and I understand what you're saying, Joe, they come in, they can say that anyways, it's just that a target is a target, and sometimes it just is the overriding factor, you know, especially in these complex years.
Oh, yeah. And that's what harder probably says.
So, I just, you know, I mean, that's why, to me, a range might be, give us some flexibility, so.
Yeah, I I, again, I.
I don't know what other people think, but.
No, I do understand it, and, you know, obviously, you know, you are the liaison to the BOE, and, you know, we could always talk to the chair and the superintendent, like, I really feel like we set the, we set the numbers, and we tell them, though, because obviously, if we set the numbers, we might as well vote today, and we get the whole budget done right now, you know, but that's not the process. You know, we still go through the whole process, we hear them out, so there there is that timeframe for them to discuss, have conversation, and really dive into everything and really figure it out, because obviously, again, it's just a number, they know what they need to do, Kathy knows what she needs to do, and she will present her case, they will present their case, and we'll move forward. Otherwise, we could just vote now, and we could negate all March and have a blast.
Just a, can I ask a question?
You certainly can.
Question for for you, you're proposing a possible three point something, or whatever.
Whatever that forecast that Joe gave, it'd be what, three percent to the BOE, was it two point eight?
Two point eight to the town.
Two point eight.
Two point eight.
Yeah, five point.
Again, you know, those are just, come, see, Leo, I know, you know, I know Kathy's going to do it.
Yeah.
You know, that's what she does.
Yeah.
But, you know, have, every time we've done it for the four years, has the Board of Ed come in that first day and said, here we are at the three percent, have a good day?
Not so far.
No, so we know that's not going to happen, so.
That's already a bit of a range, too, because in the past, we've set one target for the town, right? We've done, I think it was three percent our first year, and then last year was two point something, so there is a little bit of wiggle room there, in that the municipal side is is going to be, you know, shorter than the BOE side just to start, so there is already some differentiation, you know, whatever that's worth.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about the things that we need to do, based on, I'm thinking more capital budget, I know you guys are talking school, which we got to consider both, but I know there's some big things on the capital budget that do need to be addressed, they need to be addressed, last year, we just had to bite the bullet.
Uh huh.
I just don't want that bullet to go off in my mouth.
No.
So, I'm thinking we might need to just put a little buffer in there, so that we can do those things and be realistic.
Did you have your, did you factor in your capital improvement into this?
Yeah, it's at, it's at a higher rate.
So, is that what's the number?
Three point two.
So, we're at three, so last year was the one million, we're already at the three point two already into this one, and that's usually what the average going through for the?
That's the policy.
That's the policy, so we're already at the policy, so.
Yeah, three point two, that three point five was where I was kind of imagining.
Yeah, so it's already built into the, into the budget, so obviously, she has taken into effect our strategic plan, all the other things, and anything that's going to pop up between now and March, you know?
I mean, I I can tell you, the board's initial capital improvement presentation was four point four.
Yeah.
So, and it's significant, in part, because there was only five hundred thousand allotted for the board last year. Can I ask a follow up, follow up question for Joe? In the, in your debt service projections, does it account for any additional bonding this year? Yes, okay.
Yeah, the, what'll probably happen is in August, when the notes come due, I have to permanently finance the twenty eight million that's out there right now in notes, and I will add to that whatever else, for example, probably be a million dollars for roads, it's already been authorized by the voters, it's just the, probably the million dollars worth of work this year, so I'll finance that. There's some, there's some follow-up projects that are out there, so, yes, the short answer is yes.
And if we were to approve something this year as part of the budget cycle that requires bonding, I'm assuming that's not going on, we're not paying the debt service for that right away?
No.
And would that be, is that an assumption built in to the projections?
Right, the debt cert, the way the debt works is, if you authorize something, the voters, go to referendum in April, the voters approve, I'm trying to think of what, firetruck, so they said they approved a firetruck this April, that probably will not be bonded, it may, chances are it'll be bonded in two chunks, probably fifty fifty, or it'll be bonded in one chunk, but it probably, the first bonding would probably not take place to twenty five or twenty six. It depends on the project, it depends upon what the lead time is on the project, right, for example, a firetruck, it's a two-year-out pro, if you ordered the firetruck, it's two years out before you actually get it. You know, a roof project, if it, if there's, if there's no plans available, talking about, if you authorize the roof project in April, it probably would not go to bid until next January, twenty five, it probably go to, work would actually, a school roof would probably take place in the summer of twenty five, bonding would probably take place in twenty six.
Okay, thank you.
So, it it pushes out.
Any other discussion? All right. Keith, would you make a motion? And we can go further?
I'll make a motion to set our budget targets as two point eight percent on the municipal side and three percent on, for the Board of Education.
Second.
Okay, with the, oh, we got the, the motion is second, again, you know, I do hear everything you say, and I know the Board of Ed will come in where they need to be as far as, we need A, B, and C and sit down with us in March to explain, you know, we need this, we need that, here's what's the driver, here is this cost, and hopefully, we'll have more information, or we should have more information, as Joe said, in order to, like, all right, we know this is coming in now, this is coming in now, we can start trying to offset different things, and obviously, listen to Kathy and her departments, what they need to do, what capital projects need to really take place this year, what strategic planning is going to go forward, what doesn't go forward, so obviously, it's going to be a balance and active vote, because it always seems to be every year, we we take away from one to give to the other, and it's always taking away from the capital to improve the BOE part of it. So, historically, we've done that, and I don't see why we never would not do it, but, you know, starting off at a six, I think we sort of just have to keep our eyes open and realize that we're already at a high number to start off with, we're behind the gun, knowing of the, the, the money that's being spent for the high school, you know, this year and next year, that's going to be the two hardest matters for us, and we just have to really keep the eye on the ball, and knowing that we've got one of the biggest projects in, yeah, probably in the capital area, up on top of the hill that's going on, will be hopefully completed and up and running soon.
Any other talk before we take the vote?
I'm just a little concerned that if we give a target, we might miss the opportunity or the obligation to take care of something that needs to be taken care of, if we say, say, two point eight or three for either entity, that there might be things that, we said, we might look back and say, well, you said this was the target, and not look at what really needs to be done. Are we really open to looking at what needs to be done, or are we really looking forward to meeting a number?
We just said it. You know, Kathy, we just said it in front of Kathy, we can refer to the board, too, you know, we will look, we will take everything into consideration, we'll have great numbers coming in, oh, not great, but all the numbers coming in hopefully in March, so if we have a great understanding to where our budget needs to be. And that's what we'll do together as the board, when everything comes in front of us.
I, I think that, I feel that my role is to review as an elected, you know, member of town council is to review the, a proposed budget and evaluate in conjunction with the folks who run the town, what the priorities are, but my comfort level is to see everything in the budget and then go through and evaluate priorities, because we're the ones who were elected based on our, our, whatever you want to say, whatever we talk to people about at the doors or our opinions, and I think it's important to me that I can review and evaluate the priorities of the budget, and setting a target makes that challenging.
Gotcha. Anything else, Sarah?
Well, I'll just say, I mean, I, I think, from what I'm, I'm hearing you saying, is you're making it very clear that this is what we would like for a target, given all the numbers that we know now, but we're not saying you can't come forward and present something different and tell us why you need it and what the drivers are. In fact, I think you invited Kathy and the BOE to do that, so I would hope that those, that information would be brought forward if there is something that we need to know. But as far as setting a target, I think that this is a reasonable target to start with.
Keith, I'm sure you said 18 million things already, so.
I'm good. Yeah, I've said it all.
Dave, I know where you stand also, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, like I said, I appreciate it. I, I don't mean to do any injustice to either Kathy or the superintendent to do this, but I just think it just keeps us going in the mission that we went, we said to our people knocking on doors that we would keep low taxes, we'll keep the eye on the ball, and we're here to listen and to make informed decisions as we go through everything in March.
All right?
I could also see, and, again, I think we've said enough, but I, you know, for me, I could even see, you could also do ranges per the town, ranges per the school, and then, you know, none of that's cast in stone that it's gonna be the high number and that it's gonna be even higher than what's there right now from Joe's projections, so, so that, that's, that would be the last thing I would say.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have the motion is second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Okay, 4 to 3. Thank you all very much. Again, we will look at this in its entirety in March, we'll have everything in front of us, and we will work to make sure everybody is funded properly to move forward. E for new business?
No new business.
And I think we have executive session today?